Five thirty, we'll call it Ramsey County Commission Meeting ordered.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those three sets of minutes in your packet. One from the eighth that we missed first September meeting and then the two meetings at September. Their motion to approve. Motion to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes, is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carried. Agenda. Probably need to add. Bill Wood's letter in here, I suppose huh? Under new business. Is there anything else on the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion and second to approve the agenda as amended. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carried. We'll start the meeting with Sarah.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present the NDSU Extension Ramsey County Budget for the 2026 fiscal year. So as you can, as a reminder, the salaries for our extension agents. Lindsay Overmeyer and myself are a fifty fifty split between North Dakota State University and Ramsey County. With NDSU covering the benefits for the agents. And locally, we employ a full-time administrative assistant. And we have just hired a part-time administrative assistant to ensure adequate office coverage and support for our programming. So we moved down the fixed charges, reflect the benefits for our full-time administrative assistant. And then the majority of our budget lines, including travel, equipment repairs, dues and registrations and miscellaneous expenses remain unchanged from last year. And then office supplies, we decided to go slightly higher just to keep up with programming and needs and general inflation. Miscellaneous line covers items such as our cellphone reimbursement, advertisements for events and educational supplies that directly support our programming for youth, families and producers in Ramsey County. Our goal is to continue providing high-quality, research-based education and outreach to the residents of Ramsey County in four H youth development, ag and natural resources and family and community wellness. Again, thank you for your continued support of NDSU Extension in Ramsey County. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding our budget.
Any questions for Sarah?
I have none. Good budget, thank you.
I do have one other question. Just wanted to put out that roundup is January seventh and eighth, it's quickly approaching. And in the years past, we have asked of the possibility of the doors between the buildings of the memorial building and the courthouse to be open if that is possible to allow flow of traffic for that event.
Make that motion to have the doors open seven and eight.
Second.
Motion and second to accommodate the roundup on January seventh, eighth, twenty twenty six, that the doors be open between the memorial building and the courthouse. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carried. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, you're up.
Good afternoon, Lisa Crosby, Director of Big Region Heritage Center and the Art Center. Thank you for switching my date from last week or last time. I'm sure Candy saw a few emails of total stress from the art center or the art show. I was a little bit under duress when I found out that I could have to present, but it's much better this week. However, I'm dressed like a pioneer woman, but it's better. I don't have a lot of changes from last year's budget. It looks a little different and I tried a new program and some of the, the additions went into different things, so. But my salary didn't change really any, I did get a little bit of a raise, but other than that, we, I hope facilities shouldn't change anything, I hope that heat costs and, and I'm, I'm hoping for nothing wrong with the boiler and things of that nature. I do have a bid for the roof coming in from A and R Roofing. So I was hoping that would be here by the time I met with you. However, I talked with or I texted with Mike and he said he was hoping to get it cheaper down, so that was good news. So I don't have that in hand. As soon as I have that in hand and the board can look at it, I will send that your way, of course. That has been a long time coming with a lot of people not returning phone calls or, or emails or anything. So I will be really happy when to see that come across my desk. Other things with facilities, the steps are in just, you know, the front steps look awful. I do have a couple of gentlemen that have reached out saying they are willing to help with payment with that. You know, that's not going to be a cheap job by any means. So when they said that, I right away started looking at what that's going to cost. And so I talked with an engineer in town and he came over and looked and I reached out to the gentleman that had been talked to before, which was quite a while ago. And he probably will be coming up to take a look, he didn't come the time before. But it's not an easy job, you know, they'll probably have to take the steps right off of the building and then replace the, the walls that they're sitting on. And hopefully they won't break. If, if the plat, you know, the marble steps break, that's where the cost gets exponentially higher. But we will cross that bridge when we get there. Right now, I'm not asking for any support from the county, so don't think I'm asking for anything for that. I'm just updating you on facilities. And what's been going on at the Heritage Center, we've been really busy last summer, we had two weddings. We've had lots of bridal receptions, we've, I mean bridal showers and baby showers and different things like that. We've had graduations, we're already booked for next year for graduations. We've been really lucky to work with the library, with AmeriCorps, to have Val Sampson and Liz Jansen. They're really wonderful to work with. Liz Jansen, if you guys have seen in advertising, she and Dave Elke are working with Pints and Pioneers and they're doing great things for history, things out in the, in the public. And that's been a lot of fun. And we're assisting lately, there's been a lot of people coming in for genealogy and, and history things. You know, just wanting to look through the Daisy Hermanson Library. And that's kind of a needle in the haystack, but it is amazing what you will find in that Daisy Hermanson Library. So it's always fun to assist people with that. And then, you know, what they, where their family might have had land. So we help with that and Art Center, lots of art classes. We've had ten different exhibits over the last year with the high school art show and then the big art show that just happened. And, and the community event this last weekend, which was huge, that went over really well, the Fall Festival. And, and it was great to have auto drive there and then, you know, different performances. I'll be excited to do that again next year, I think it was probably one of the best events we've had downtown in a long time, so that was fun. The show is still up, if you guys want to go and look. Then we had macaroni days earlier this spring, we'll do that again, but we'll, we'll make that bigger. That was just kind of a tryout, but we, it was fun and we'll, we'll make that bigger next year. Then we always have the gala, we didn't make as much this year. Next year, the Chamber's having their huge gala. So we're going to bow out of the gala for our gala and find a different fundraiser. Do something a little less formal and, and not as labor-intensive and maybe just a little different in fun. And then maybe a few more little raffles and, and different things, but it's always busy. I, I'm never bored, that's for sure. If there's not something going on in the museum, there's something in the community, so.
Any questions for Lisa?
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Next on the agenda is Hubd property tax exempt application.
Good evening, we received an application for property tax incentives for newer expanding businesses from John Hubd of Hubd Properties and Resort. They're asking for a five-year property tax exemption at a hundred percent for an expansion of an existing business project. Prior to turning this over to Commissioner Gesner, I would like to let you know that a representative of each affected school district and township is included as a non-voting member in the negotiations and deliberation of this application with you. I know that Al Gangl is here from South Minnewalk. I'm not sure that Sherri Olson from the school district was who I was.
I think Cory.
Oh Cory, yeah, perfect. I wasn't sure who was here. So you do have both of them here to represent their, their areas and John Hubd is here also. If you wanted to speak first, if you had anything you wanted to share about your expansion.
So since we've acquired the resort, I don't know if any, most of you must be familiar with it. Well, we're trying to revitalize it, which Ackerman's got kind of relaxed and then run it to its potential. So our plan is to expand the Marina, which there's a shortage of Marina spots in the Lake area. And then we are running cabins. From their numbers to our numbers, we've almost doubled the occupancy, just the way that we run it versus what they did. And we've already added two to three more employees than they have, they had already. And we've only been running since January of this year. And then we've taken the three houses which were current, used to be residential homes, now they are rentals. Which is each home itself is generating about eighty to ninety thousand dollars a year revenue, which before they were residential. So now they're part of the resort. And then we have future plans and that's all in the application, if you guys have seen it.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions?
I guess Mr. Hubd, the, the question that we, we have, I would assume that most commissioners have is that it's an existing business that isn't new or unique to our area. And you came in and started, you know, making improvements which, you know, probably need to be done. But that's where the, usually we get these and it's for a, a new business or a major expansion of an existing business, this is something that is already there. So I'm not sure what the other commissioners' thoughts on that are.
And we can already show about a forty percent increase in revenue versus what they were doing. And we don't even have a full twelve months of data yet, so. And we do have the primary sector. Which the houses which weren't rented before, the, the majority of visitors that are coming to those are out of state, Wisconsin, Minnesota, Iowa. Then each, each one of them houses holds about fifteen, ten to fifteen guests each time, so it's, it's a big impact.
Any other questions for John? I got a question for Beth, I guess.
Thank you.
So when he says those residential houses are now rental properties, how does that affect how they're taxed?
There, there wouldn't be a lot of a change in the taxes except for if their condition changed and they went from like normal condition to above normal with their renovations. But basically it's still based on the replacement costs and such and, and how we value it.
Doesn't go to a commercial rate or any, still kind of a residential.
Their parcel, I think their parcels are probably all under commercial currently. If not, we can change the PDF which would change that rate a little bit from point nine or point oh nine to point one or.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. But we'd have to check on if they're listed under residential, I think they might be combined with the resort currently.
Any other questions for Beth while she's standing here?
So what's the current tax, do you know?
I do, you know, our office typically just works in values and so it would be with the, the information he gave for the renovations. It'd be roughly six hundred thousand in taxable value and it would equate probably roughly between sixteen to seventeen thousand at today's mill rate. Obviously each year that would change based on the mills and, and if we have to make any changes in the commercial valuations across the county.
And that seventeen thousand, that was after?
Yeah, I think, actually, I think this last year they paid roughly sixteen thousand something, but he estimated a hundred and twenty eight thousand in renovations. So I just, we just.
So that would be, that would be including.
That. Yeah.
At the current rate.
Okay.
I guess the struggle I have with this is the property was there like Jeff said, and you're coming in and doing renovations. And I know we have had other entities come to town and do renovations, granted I understand that they didn't come in and do this form. But I always was under the impression that it was for new properties also, not for renovation of a property. And I have a hard to give a hundred percent exemption on a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollar renovation. But that's my thing on it.
So we don't have to keep Beth standing there?
No. Sorry.
No, that's fine. I guess my comment is if you watched any of the debates from the last legislative session or read any articles or anything. Local entities got raked over pretty hard for giving property tax breaks. And granted, the property breaks they were talking about were Walmart and, you know, big, you know, way bigger dollar figures than we're talking here, but it was one of the things that was one of the talking points for changing the property tax. The changes that were made. With the point being that, you know, if you're given tax breaks to some, taxes are going up for someone else. And granted them, you know, we're not talking those kind of figures here, but I guess that's, when I read it, that's what popped into my mind was the just the face value of.
Robin Peter to pay Paul, basically.
Right.
Do either of the other political subdivisions have any comments? Or have you made any decisions at your levels?
If you don't know, Cory Mar was the Douglas Lake School Board. We discussed this last night at our meeting. We are against it for the simple fact of what Commissioner Gester said. It's in wish or volk, it's hundred percent for too much for too long. With a three percent cap on anything going, growing, kind of puts a little bit of, I don't want to say hurt on everything, it's not terrible, but still three percent, so. We don't get any money from anything but property taxes. We don't collect sales tax or anything from anybody coming into town, we don't collect any of that money, so. We are, I guess, against it.
Any questions for Cory? Thanks Cory, thank you. Al, you want to represent the township?
Well, as a township, we haven't had a formal letter for request of decision or anything. I can see this is for, you know, new businesses, not existing. The only thing, like we haven't met as a township and as in the board made a, you know, a formal decision on this, but a personal decision on this, a personal opinion is just the thought I had is if you could go like a one year or a two year or spread it out over if you done a one year spread out over five, something like that, that was a thought, so.
And I noticed too in some of the information like Woodland Resort, some of those were a hundred eighty, sixty, you know. It, it went down over that five-year period, so that's definitely worth consideration.
Any questions for Al, I guess, since they haven't met, you probably can't answer anything officially as a township supervisor. Thank you. Any comments or other questions of anybody?
I would just say that I'm in agreement that this should be used for new business. And ideally, not, in my opinion, not something that we have several of the similar business in town already or in the community.
I would also agree with that. When I've been on different boards, most of the exemptions come on new building businesses, whatever.
Not established. They're not already established.
Right.
And then, and that's where I'm looking at, it was an established business. Where if you have someone coming in, new business, the reason that I always thought the five-year exemption was there because if you can get someone to go five years, most likely they're gonna make it. I guess that's how I always understood it, but not that you can't have something different.
Any other discussion, anybody else in, anybody else here for this particular opinion or topic? Well, entertain a motion with the commission's wishes are.
I'll make a motion to deny the hundred percent property tax exemption just because it's a existing business.
Is there a second?
I would second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Otis.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Volk.
Hi.
Will Homme.
Hi.
Gesner.
Hi. Motion carried. We've got four minutes here before the scheduled budget hearing. Just, just to move right into that, since it's four minutes or do we have to wait? Do we have to wait?
Probably.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I guess if, if you need a moment, take a moment, I guess, as Commissioner Volk just did. need a moment, take a moment, I guess, as Commissioner Volk just did.
Not here?
Yep, that, that's here, yep. Okay, it's six o'clock, entertain a motion to post, or temporary halt the regular meeting and open a public hearing on the budget.
I would say move second.
Motion and a second to suspend the meeting and open a budget hearing. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. We'll open the budget hearing. This is the public hearing, so if anybody wants to comment on the budget, this is your chance. I'll rush up here at once, just raise your hand and you come on up.
You look crazier.
Okay, so what kind of information are you looking for, Ryan? Oh, well, okay, so to explain what's going on, this is actually part of is it Senate Bill 1176 or House Bill? House Bill 1176 where they changed how all this works, basically. So we have to, we always had to have a budget meeting or a public hearing on the budget, okay? The way it used to be this time of year, you would get a estimated tax statement in the, in the mail, okay? Legislature's done away with that, so. And it's, it's been explained to me, we can't do that on our own and just give you that information. So what'll happen since, it's kind of screwy because it's, the bill went into law in the middle of the year, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's April, you'll get a statement from the tax equal, the tax equalization department that will show you what your evaluation was and what, and what the increase on your evaluation will be, but that will not be disseminated into what the school gets or what the county gets or what the township gets, like you had it in the past, you could always look on there and see where that money was going, basically. And then you get this notice to come and talk about the budget. And then you'll get your tax notice at the regular time. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, but there still won't be a breakdown, it'll just be you owe X amount of dollars.
Correct?
Where before it used to have that same breakdown on township, schools, county, anybody that assesses mills would be on your summary. And that's dictated by the state legislature, that's we have to follow that law.
I don't think it's anything that anybody in that group probably liked. As I know I talked to Lee about it, we like the breakdown, so we know where we're standing, but that's out of our control. We have to write the sentence.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I don't know what your guys' opinion of it is, but I really like breakdowns, so I can hold.
So, and just to throw some more mud at the wall. So if you take our budget from last year and you, there's a 3% cap, okay, that's simple math. But there are mill levies that we have to collect. The two that come to mind are Garrison Diversion and the State Medical School, there's no cap on those, so they will rise with your, if your valuation goes up 5%, that mill will reflect that. So, at the end of the day, your 3% cap on your taxes will actually be over 3% because there are mill levies. The other one that comes to mind is anything that has to do paying off debt, so the bonds that like the school district has levied for the school additions, those will follow your evaluation, so there won't be a 3% cap on those. So if that doesn't piss you off, I don't know what will. Right, so if your valuation doesn't go up 3%, then obviously none of us will get 3%, but if it goes up more than 3%, you're gonna get whatever. You probably need to come up and talk up to the mic. Otherwise we'll get emails about, nobody could hear anything.
So does some of that change to the fact that they were able to do it? Taking the percentage out of it and saying that they were just figuratively saying that they were operating on a $10,000 budget, which was working for them. Yeah, they could probably lose a little bit more, but then all of a sudden, when this hits, they're all of a sudden may work on the, I'm using figurative speeches, all of a sudden they've got 15,000. And if their budget was working at 10%, then it's all of a sudden, wow, wait a minute, we got, you know, an extra 20 or 30% to spend on something else that probably isn't needed? So is there any control on any of that?
So, I guess when we did our budget, our department's heads were, you know, if you need something, it has to be within that 3%, right? So, I mean.
Yep, and I understand that. But anything more than that, you know, it's like, like I said, you know, you were running fine on this budget and now all of a sudden, when, well, a statement has been made before and I heard it like out of a school district to the south, well, the state gave you this $1,500 break, so us raising your real estate taxes for our school, $1,500 shouldn't bother you.
Oh, we can't do that.
You know, that statement has been made out of a couple of schools, you know, and not schools or different outfits, you know, through the country, which I think is kind of absurd.
Yeah.
You get a break, but.
If, I don't know how they could get away with doing that.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Because if you did that on everybody's home, you're not gonna you're gonna screw up that 3% somewhere along the line because you're gonna go over.
See, and I think a few years ago, the state gave us a break on our taxes like five or $700. And then all of a sudden, we got zapped with another tax and say, okay, well, the state gave it to you. Well, two years later, the state didn't give us that bracket back on a tax and then it was like, okay, well, that just gets to be part of the program.
Yeah.
Am I wrong to a point? I mean, it's just, there's still got to be something in there to saying, okay, now instead of you getting $100, now you're gonna get $150 and you shouldn't need the other 50 or whatever, but
Right, so.
Make your budget, because you had a budget that worked.
Right. So the way I understand it and it's not the first time I've been wrong, but if your taxes, if your property taxes is $1,600, if that's, if that's how the budget and that's your deal, then you should get the 1,600 from the state and you will owe no taxes.
But you can't get a credit, so if you are someone that only owed 1,200.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that.
So that has been some confusion there also.
I mean, I guess I.
I mean, as far as someone raising your taxes, the amount of the rebate. I don't see.
We're not, yeah.
Well, we're not, I don't see how you could.
But again, like you say, it's all of a sudden we're getting a double bump on.
Yeah.
You know, and I mean, it's like, yeah, this might run for a while, but pretty quick, I mean, it's like the implement business, it's probably going back now.
Right. And that's.
I mean, that's just something that's there, I mean, I'm not looking for an answer, but I'm saying, you know, all of a sudden, yeah, we've got a cap on a three, but all of a sudden it amounts to a total of eight or nine.
Right, and that.
And I don't think we're gonna be able to tell until you get this, kick this can down the road for two or three years, like you said, because I understand, I'm 100% tracking where you're going, where the 1,600 or whatever the thing's gonna be back this year. And that, it isn't gonna change evaluation, if I'm to add on to my home, my evaluation's gonna go up.
Yeah, I understand that, yep.
And see that.
Depending, things go up, if lumber goes up, your evaluation on your homes, that's kind of out of our control.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't doubt that, but I mean, it's still, like I said, it's a double bump, so it's just like.
The thought process is, it could happen. You don't know, because you don't know if that $1,600 is gonna stay there, because they're, they vote on it every year. You don't know what's gonna happen.
Like Lee was saying earlier, he said, just all, you know, all of a sudden in April, you're gonna get a, a bill. And it's like, well, uh, you know, it's like anybody.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
You would like to prepare yourself for it.
Well, prepare or be able to, you know, whatever, but anyway, that was my concern.
Okay.
Both of them could run with it.
But then the other thing that you have to keep in mind too is that $1,600 for that credit isn't a blanket across everyone. You have to apply for that every year. So.
As long as it's available.
Yeah.
And now you go back to that, what you were at, plus.
Is there any other public questions or yes, go ahead? You gotta, I'm sorry, but you're gonna have to come up to the microphone. Okay, is there any way to get a breakdown rather than the one lump, like the old tax? There's no way. That answers that question.
And 11, 1176 is what created us not to be able to give that. It's not that we don't want to, because even Lee said, was there any way around it where we could still do that, but that's out of our hands.
Anything else? Are there any other questions that we probably aren't gonna be able to answer? You got any questions?
Hi, if you do get a mailing, let's say in April and you dispute it or you think something's off, what's the method for checks and bounds that, do you still contact the local tax office or would we call the state tax office?
So, that, that process, as I understand, is still the same. So if you're, your first stop, if, if you're in a township, would be the township equalization meeting, which is in April. And then there's a county equalization meeting where those are supposed to be held, handled at county level. And then if you still don't get satisfaction, there is a state equalization meeting. I think that's in April also. Sure, because I've never paid attention past the county, I'll be honest. But there is, those, those meetings are still.
Okay, so there is still a method for some checks and bounds, if you think something, you want to dispute something, okay.
It just threw, it just threw everything off because we are halfway through the cycle.
Okay. Okay, perfect, thank you.
They probably should have like, just.
Let this year go by, started on the new year.
Sent anything and started at the beginning, not in the middle. And it would have made more sense.
Any other questions? Like we say, this is all a burning curve for us too, because it, when they first came out, townships were exempt from the 3% cap and then one day you walk into the auditorium's office and there's steam coming out of everybody's ears and the state said, no, that's wrong. And then the county gets to tell them the state didn't take any responsibility for that, so. None of this is pleasant, it's, I think it was the long way around the barn for property relief that has just made a complicated process even more complicated, that's just my opinion, that's not the opinion of Ramsey County, its employees or whatever the rest of that statement is, that's just my opinion. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to close the budget hearing and reopen the regular commission meeting.
So moved?
Motion and a second to close the public hearing on the budget and resume the regular commission meeting, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Hearing is closed and the regular meeting is reopened. So next on the agenda would be Star.
Good evening.
It says L E C on it.
That's why.
So I guess I have a question is, it's about captain salary. Cause when the budget left here last year, it was gonna be, we voted at half and half and hindsight being twenty twenty, that should have probably been better communicated between us and the L E C board or like the janitor that we share.
And there's a joint powers?
Yep, so I, so I, so I get kinda where this came from. But I guess it wasn't communicated that well, I mean, for me personally. So it was kind of a shock that it wasn't in the budget that way. So I guess I don't know how that process should have went or how it did go or, you know, because you know, I've talked with Captain Craft and I, you know, I'm sure he felt like I was hunting his job and that's not what I was doing, I was just looking out for taxpayers around the county. Um, to have an employee in the jail, I, you know, and I know that caused problems with D O C R as well. Um, so can you shed any light on that for me? So was that like the board said no or?
The board said no.
Okay.
So, so I brought it to the board, I said, I have a budget with the captain, I have a budget without the captain. How do you want to go? And the board said without.
And since then, Lee, to your question, I have went back and looked at the minutes also. And, uh, I asked Jeff about it and we talked about it and it's definitely something that we need to talk about at our meeting tomorrow. Because we all voted on it and I agree that I don't know how we can go back on a vote.
Right.
I, I was at, at the same meeting that you're talking about and like Jeff and I said, talked about it, slipped through the cracks that we should have been telling you that half the budget, we didn't have, it's not a choice. It was voted on, half the budget would be taken care by L E C, half the budget would be taken care, half of his wage, excuse me, and benefits. And now that we voted on it last year, we have to, I feel we need to go back and revisit.
Was that at the L E C meeting or at this?
That was
Here.
So that's why I'm thinking that.
And I, and when we did our vote there and it was to take it out, we should have made sure we had that information, like you, you said, Jeff said, I think there's
There was a break, right?
Yep.
And we're just trying to fix the break.
There, there was a break in communications, I do think that sheriff has Captain Craft in his budget.
Yep.
For, for next year, correct? We do not have him in the budget at the L E C. So after looking at all that, yep, there was a mistake made. Um, but I don't know how we go back and say, you know, if budgets can't be raised after a preliminary date.
Right. That's, like, I guess that's, and that, and that's, I don't think we, we can't go back in time even last year and, and redo that, that's
Well, then maybe we should amend the joint powers agreement, because this was just amended in March of this year.
Right, and that's what I think we need to have that discussion is from moving forward here, we need to have that discussion with the L E C board. Because
Good, I, I, I think if it was communicated at the L E C board that we had made that decision at the county level that we would
It should have been
It should have been done fifty, fifty.
In the beginning of the
And I think they would have better understood that.
Yeah.
Um, one of the differences in going fifty fifty, benefits become different um, in the retirement, because currently Captain Craft would be a sheriff and gets a public safety retirement where correction staff do not, so it's a much larger sum of money.
Right.
Um, and, and, and that's part of the thing that Captain Craft doesn't wanna lose and I don't wanna take it away from him is that opportunity to get that. I, I would have loved to go back twenty years and given all the L E C employees.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, have them be a part of PERS, but that was something that was made years ago and now it's getting harder and harder to get into uh, to be a part of PERS.
Yep.
Um, for political subdivisions and so it's never been financially within the wheelhouse of the L E C board to make that switch.
But even if you went fifty fifty, doesn't mean that is, I get what you're saying, Jeff, we're doing fifty fifty for the janitor, which is in PERS, right?
But it's a different PERS.
It, it's a different PERS.
So it's, what's the difference if you're paying fifty percent of a hundred? I get it that he's getting something different, but he was under employment as hours. We're not, I don't think the county's willing to take that away, we're not taking it away from them, all we're asking is for L E C to pay half. Whether, let's, let's say the employee was under, and you had asked us to pay half, so would we come back and say, we gotta give him half of our PERS? You, you get what I'm saying?
Right.
You, you would still be under the entity that he came in as.
But then I have
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a situation that we got ourselves into that if Captain Craft was to retire, I don't think we would go back down that road.
Right.
It would go away, so basically he's grandfathered in under the county's benefits. We're just asking for the fifty percent of the L E C. We, we can't change benefits.
Right.
Cause we don't wanna lose an employee also on the same side. And I'm pretty sure you'd have to agree with that.
Right, no, I do agree with that, I just, my, my concern is that he would be getting much better retirement benefits, therefore the staff.
He's getting that retirement benefit right now.
He is, but he, it's not coming out of L E C money. Where all the other staff are coming out of L E C money and are only getting five percent of their wage as the retirement that we match. Whereas if it's coming out of Ramsey County, it's almost ten percent.
And that would be a discussion for the M O U or the joint powers agreement, so I'm just, I'm just trying to get it official here that we need to have that discussion. Because I think that's the right thing, taxpayers around the county. Cause I don't think it, the whole thing is kinda wonky for me. So the other, when you were here last time, uh, moving unless somebody has something else on that particular subject. You mentioned, um, you were listing your employees last time you were here and the accounts payable person. And this is what I was told and I just, I'm trying to verify and find out what's true and what isn't true in the big world of Ramsey County. Um, so that position, you didn't have that position, but that was, that was, that the gal that used to do the books, okay, tell me.
I will tell you.
Tell me what
That position has always been there.
Okay.
So, um, we've had a financial person ever say, so we've had a financial administrator and then we've had an accounts payable, we have to have that for separation of duties
Yep.
in regards to our audits and things like that.
Gotcha.
So that position has always been there.
Okay.
I don't know why or how the conversation came about that when Peggy left the financial administrator that this was automatically made for her.
Okay.
That position's been there for
So who was doing it prior to Peggy moving into that position?
Emily Jager.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
We were just going without that position until
Right, right. We, we, and we lost, uh, Emily was doing two parts of that, she was doing the accounts payable and then the H R portion of it and then after we left, we didn't replace that.
That's why she went
Part time.
Part time with no benefits.
Right.
That makes sense.
I remember that conversation now.
Yeah.
Appreciate.
No problem.
Anything else for, as far as the L E C budget goes? Appreciate your time.
No problem, thank you.
Yep, thanks, sir.
Um, Daniel, you're up next.
That's me.
That's you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, I am presenting this request to you all, uh, to uh, essentially give me access to the entirety of the state's attorney's, uh, budget for salary. Um, when I came on board here, well, when you all appointed to be, uh, state's attorney after Mr. Cummings left, uh, the offered salary was approximately, I don't have the exact calculation, uh, approximately eight thousand dollars, uh, less, uh, in salary, uh, from Mr. Cummings salary to what you all decided to pay me, uh, should I have accepted the position and I was happy to accept and I appreciate the appointment and the vote of confidence, uh, of this commission. Um, it's been approximately eight months, January twenty-fourth, uh, to today. I think the last eight months have gone well, I think the work product's coming out of my office and the amount of responsiveness and and lines of communication, not only with this commission, uh, but with the various county uh, offices, auditor, treasurer, um, recorder, uh, emergency management, uh, highway, uh, everybody has seen an increased uh, communication contacts. Work, just work product and, uh, relations with my office have, over the last eight months alone. Uh, in your packets, I included, I asked Candy to include, uh, five different letters of support. Uh, not necessarily of me, but just of the state's attorney's office as it has been under my leadership over the last eight months. Um, I think all of the law enfor, all of the law enforcement agencies that work here in Ramsey County, uh, many of the court-related offices, uh, as well as some of the other entities such as Mount Lakes, who we do a lot of work with and the clerk of court, um, all have noticed a marked increase in productivity and communication and office relations since I've taken over. Um, that being said, I, I'm asking that the commission give me full access to the salary line item uh, for state's attorney. Um, I think that if you all thought that Mr. Cummings was worth that amount last year around this time, that my work over the last eight months, uh, should, uh, likewise tell you that I'm worth just as much, if not more than Mr. Cummings was at the time, so uh, I'm happy to answer any questions or if there are any additional details that the commission needs, uh, but that is the request I am making to you all and, uh, I'm looking for a motion to that effect.
So is it different than the number that we got for preliminary budget?
The preliminary budget number is a, a step plus three percent, that is Mr. Cummings salary that what, that is the line item, that's a hundred and sixteen. I don't have that specific number in front of me, uh, I believe twenty, twenty-five's budget was a hundred and sixteen thousand in some odd numbers. And then for the preliminary budgets, I put in a three percent plus step uh, off of what the budget line item was. Today, so currently my salary is approximately a hundred and eight thousand dollars. There's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in the budget line item, I'm asking for my salary to be increased from a hundred and eight to the full hundred and sixteen that is within the budget for twenty twenty-five. Not asking for the last eight months of payments or in any back pay, I'm just asking for the, my salary for the remainder of twenty twenty-five to be increased from current hundred and eight thousand and change to the full salary. So whatever that break down there would be approximately four or five thousand dollars left over in that budget line item that would not be paid out, uh, through the rest of the year.
So that bumps you up how many steps?
I, the step system, as I have discussed with Candy, um, I do not know what steps my current one hundred and eight thousand dollar salary is set at, the step system is the way it was reflected, I believe, was to what the salary budget line item was at, not at what I am currently making. But I think she could probably pull that number out.
The only reason I'm having a tough time with this, Daniel, is when we brought you on, why wasn't this a concern then?
It was a concern then, I brought it up and this commission decided that they did not wanna offer any of the applicants the full salary of the state's attorney. The information I was given is that after the job was offered to me, cause during the interview process, I mentioned, I deserved the entirety of Mr. Cummings' salary.
We decided to put you into that step at a hundred and eight thousand, correct?
The decision that I was told from Brian Singer, uh, the former H R department director, was that, that was the cap that the county commission put on the, uh, job offer. And I had already accepted the uh, appointment, I guess preliminarily, I could have refused at that point, but Mr. Singer had given me that information, there was no discussion as far as I'm aware of what the exact salary should I accept the appointment during the
So I'm looking at, how long was Mr. Cummings here, three years?
Uh, he came in at just under three, just under four years.
So four years. If I take the four years where you're at today and you've gotten a salary bump a step and, uh, and the three percent of what he obviously got, cause I've been here for five years, that's what it's been.
Mm-hmm.
That would have put you there, so for us to bring you into where he was,
Mm-hmm.
You're going right to that scale with last time.
Sure.
And I'm gonna look at it this also, so when we brought Jason
Mm-hmm.
with twenty-eight years experience.
Mm-hmm.
So his department runs smoothly for a year, is he gonna come back to the commission in a year and say it all ran great, dah 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 dah. I would like to get where Kevin, are we opening up a cannibal, cause I feel we have opened up a huge cannibal when Mr. Mo came in and got some wages increased after we did a wage study. And a few of the commissioners were on here when we voted on what that wage study was. And now all of a sudden, we're raising people's wages, not on that wage study. It messes up that whole step process because it puts people at different scales not using that, and I understand where you're coming from, cause we brought you in, I believe it was step four. With the experience that you were bringing us. If I remember right, was the same, sitting on that board. And, and I'm not saying at all that And and I'm not saying at all that you're probably not worth that. I'm just saying it messes up the process for the fact is. If we're gonna allow you to come in here and. Are we gonna get the same thing from the other heads? Or other positions that we have hired? And I was always under the understanding when we were bringing someone in, let's say. It's a twenty five step process and you bring us, what's this thing? You brought us ten years of experience. We take that into consideration and we try to put you at the step of your experience at that time so that. We're competing with the outside entities.
Sure.
At the experience level. So that that's the only question.
Sure.
Not saying one way or the other, that's where I have trouble. Looking at the whole situation is I don't want this to be on. Now I got every head standing up here trying to do something.
Sure.
Just let me interject here. So right now he's at a grade thirteen, step eight. When Bo left, he was a thirteen, a grade thirteen, step fourteen. Just. So we're kinda in there where we understand what's going on.
But he didn't start.
No, no.
Four years of.
I don't know what he, I don't know what he came in at.
Well, if you, if you take the 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 step, four steps. And. Three percent. He would have got those every year.
Then he would have come in at step ten, not step.
Eight, eight. It's a different system.
When he started.
So, yeah, so the grades and the steps. Would be different.
Well, the step is better.
Right, yeah.
And I'm just.
No, I, yeah, absolutely.
Conversation so that we're all.
So to answer your question, experience isn't the only part of this calculation. There's qualifications, there's. Work products, um there's reputation in the community. There's all these things that factor in. I get that the wage study most likely, I I'm not familiar with the underlying facts and figures of the wage study. I've seen the steps, but that's about the extent of my understanding. That happened before I came on as an employee here. Um, I would assume that time and and experience are the major weights in that. Uh but I bring. A lot of different um. Experience that doesn't come just in my time in the field of the practice of law. It comes from. Being a Texas A and M law school graduate, it top twenty five law school in the entire nation. Uh, it comes from my time uh. Working in Israel, learning water resource law and how they've done their systems. There, there's more than just the time that I've been sitting in my office, which is the reason why. You have five or six letters from stakeholders here in the community that. I'm not just asking because I've been here for six months and things have kind of improved and I'm still. Holding my office together. It's marked improvements from where you thought Mr. Cummings was deserving of a. Step increase plus three percent. The improvements that my office has seen over the last eight months is. I think deserving of the entirety of that budget line item. I'm not asking for. A great increase. I'm not even asking for additional money to be allocated to the state's attorney's office. It's money that's sitting there for this purpose. And uh all I'm doing is asking that. This commission essentially decide that the work product that you've seen out of my office is worth what you thought Mr. Cummings was worth last year.
And those are all valid points.
Hundred percent, but I'm looking at.
You know, but also. So now that I, so now that I hold the state's attorney out because I'm the chairman, I have that portfolio. Before I held that portfolio, I thought Bo was doing a good job, right? Because I hadn't heard a lot of. Negative things. Now that I've held this position, right? I've had people come to me because I am the portfolio holder saying, hey. This has changed or, you know. So I'm not saying you're not worth it. I'm just saying that. Knowing what I know now, I don't think I would have gave Bo that raise. And that's, and that's, you know. I guess. Maybe not even a valid point, but you know, um.
I do have one thing to add. We. Set up, so we just had an individual talk and I can't remember his name. And he had stated, if you have money out there, are we gonna use that money? Because that's what you're saying, that's sitting out there and how we're gonna use that money.
Because we have.
Right.
But so, just to play devil devil's advocate here, right? We're collecting that tax or we have collected that tax.
Yep.
And so it's gonna go into our coffers, right? For future use, so it. I don't wanna say we're splitting hairs there, but you know what I'm saying? It, that's not gonna save the taxpayers anything. Because at the end of the day, he's already got. For his next year's budget, so either. Get some of it now or it looks like he got a big raise, you know, and. At the first of year, right? So, um. Uh and and just, I get it, what Blaine's saying here.
So, hey, Daniel, are you looking for a. That money as a step and grade increase or just the money?
I, I'm not. I guess I don't understand what the difference between those two states.
Well, so one, we could use the money as a retention bonus.
True.
And and not bump you up steps and grades.
Sure.
And, um, because once you go up steps and grades, then. You're always getting that. But a retention bonus is, you know, hopefully to keep you here and it's not. Taking you up those other additional steps and grades beyond what we're giving to our other people that we have set forth.
Sure.
Uh you know, and.
But I think what I'm understanding, Jeff, do you wanna be at the hundred and sixteen thousand dollars? Or the one oh eight, this would be like a bonus thing, but then next year it would be one oh eight, the step plus whatever you decide.
What's in my submitted budget is a. Three percent increase plus step off of what the prior state's attorney budget was. So that's, I think it's. Um, so. Certainly. Well, I I guess from from a practical standpoint, yes, I am requesting that my step be increased to where Mr. Cummings was when he left. Um, I would, I, instead of considering it a retention. Um, bonus, just because we're talking about it. Mr. Cummings left here as state's attorney. And is making more as an assistant in Cass County. If we're gonna talk retention bonuses, that's, that's not a retention bonus. That's just giving me the rest of the salary that's in the budget. Because retention is a major issue here in Ramsey County, especially in the legal community. We're in a major legal desert. We have little to. We have three defense attorneys who work in Ramsey County and we have two prosecutors who currently work in Ramsey County. I came in as a public defender in twenty twenty one and I was one of those three defense attorneys who worked here. W- we have a major issue with retaining attorneys here in rural North Dakota, whether it's Ramsey County, Nelson Benson. Wherever it may be.
I, I completely understand that. A- and I, hey, but comparing Ramsey and Cass County is, hey, you know, comparing comparing an orange and a. You know, banana.
Sure, and they're both fruit.
Yeah, they're both fruit.
And that's part of what retention bonuses are for.
And we're both counties. But. You know, you take a look at the salary um of Cass County's employees and yeah, they're gonna be substantially higher. Based on their, a lot of it is their revenue abilities.
Sure.
And the people that they um serve and the properties that they have under them. So. Well, I don't know why we continue to talk about him. He's no longer here and what he's making in Cass County is irrelevant. To this discussion. You know, good for him, I guess. I don't know, um.
It, but my point isn't about Mr. Cummings. My point is if Ramsey County wants to continue to be competitive. And attempt to attract good position. I plan on being in this position for the foreseeable future. I'm not going anywhere. But I am trying to encourage Ramsey County. To see that a quality candidate for my position for an assistance position is worth the additional monetary. Value and monetary hardship for the county of. A ninety five thousand dollar salary for another attorney is a large pill to swallow with benefits included on that. But. Good attorneys who are showing up and giving support to the commission, to the sheriff. To the Mountain Lakes Human Service Zone, to the Human Service Center, to to the State Health Department. If we are doing good work on the front end, we avoid large lawsuits in the future. We avoid. Additional expenditures on having to correct mistakes. If we spend a little upfront. We save a lot of money in the long run by using attorneys to prevent these sorts of costs. And waste of taxpayer dollars down the line. The situation with. Planning and zoning and flood. That has been an ongoing issue for years and. If we had an attorney pushing for that ten, fifteen, twenty years ago and more successful, maybe. Uh Judge Olson, when he was the state's attorney, pushed for those sorts of things. But if we had had. Some processes in place earlier, we would be avoiding. All sorts of heartaches as the emergency manager manager deals with all sorts of land issues and. You yourself, Commissioner Frith, hear all the time from people who have planning and zoning issues that. My office doesn't have the ability to fix or even address because the county doesn't have a mechanism in place for that. What I want is for my office with my leadership to be able to address some of the shortfalls that have. Affected the county just in my short time here over the past year and a half. There are things that. With my office fully staffed and running at a hundred percent, we can make smoother. I can help more with the county offices in making sure that their processes are compliant with.
Daniel, I'm not questioning the job that you've done. True, um, I think you've done an extraordinary job in the short period of time that you've been here. Extraordinary. Um, I appreciate beyond and um I have nothing but praise for you and from. Uh others that have worked with you in other things. And so I just not. Hey, maybe completely behind the methodology of coming to us with this request.
True.
Um, but. No, I, 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 I appreciate your, everything you've done for your office and uh the county and. Uh I hope that you continue doing so regardless of the outcome tonight's uh meeting.
Uh, as I told you all, regardless of this board's decision for against me, that doesn't change the work product that you get out of me. I'm just hopeful that my words and the support that you have in your packets regarding me. Encourage you to uh make the decision that I'm requesting that you make.
I just don't wanna have um fifty three other employees submitting letters of recommendation or support. For their employment and their work efforts. Um, the, you, you know, I appreciate. Like I said, everything you've done. But, um. But you know, what would stop other departments or other employees submitting those letters? And saying, hey, I deserve more as well.
Budget restrictions. Other employees have their. Budgets controlled by the county if they're receiving their salary, their budget is. Capped at their salary and it can only increase year from year. I, as the state's attorney, came in and there's an entire budget line item that. Is sitting there for my salary that is not being used. That's the difference. That's, that's the major difference and.
Well, a- and going back to what Commissioner Volk said is that you had gr- had agreed on that initially.
Sure. And I, I had discussions and I decided to take it and. Uh in my discussions with Commissioner Gesner, I just requested the ability to come in six months. I almost considered it as an informal probationary period. And in no way, shape or form does that put the county commission on. Any sort of requirement or notice that they have to treat it the same way, but that was the intent.
A- and I, and I think that would have been a a good way to approach it as well, as a. Temporary probationary period. And that's something that wasn't spelled out initially when you were hired either though. Um, but I think that's a good way to look at it is, hey, you know, now that you've exceeded that. All our expectations through that six months probationary period, then here's this additional.
Sure. A- and had salary and those negotiations been a part of the open. Um, interview process, that probably would have come up. Salary not coming up until Mr. Singer was giving me my uh conditional job offer of state's attorney. After accepting the appointment from the commission, I had no opportunity to discuss my salary with this board prior to accepting the appointment.
Good point. Thank you.
So our decision here is, I see it. Correct me if I'm wrong. So if we go forward with this, basically he's asking for a raise for the next four months. Right? But then that also affects. Next year's budget, because if we don't approve what he's asking for. Basically that. And for budgetary reasons, that's a good thing because it will go down. It right, he'll go back to, um. Probably go from a thirteen eight to a thirteen nine plus three percent. Um, which isn't the budget number he put here, um.
So you're saying he wouldn't stay at the one sixteen?
Right, I mean.
Yeah.
He, he, he's either gonna get it. For the next four months and then get it, you know, or he's gonna get it as he presented his budget. He's gonna get the step.
Oh, I'm.
You know, he's gonna get the steps first of the year. Right? So I mean, it, it does affect next year's budget somewhat.
I was.
No.
I, I, I saw those numbers, preliminary numbers, and I thought that was what we're already done.
No, so.
No, if. It wouldn't affect next year's, well, it would, it would go down.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That, that, yes, it would go down if we weren't to agree on this amount.
Right.
I'm okay. The horse kicked me in the head, I get it.
Okay.
So then the commission, based on their vote this evening, will be reducing my budget request by whatever that's. If, if it's a no, then my budget request will be reduced.
Well, I mean, it could. That's, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying it will be.
Sure, okay.
I mean. If you follow the, the grades and the steps. We, we're still, we, we have to approve the raise one way or the other.
Sure.
Is what I'm trying to get to. So it's either now or, or we have to discuss it as a budget item.
It would just be a. If we move into the, as it's shown here, as he presented, it'd be at the one sixteen, whatever. And then it would be uh presented as a step plus a three percent.
Right, and that's.
Or it would go back to the current that he's at with a step plus the three percent.
It could, it could be.
Yeah, that would be roughly.
Easier to.
Bring me up to like a hundred and fourteen, a hundred and fifteen is my rough math on that.
But just so you're tracking the same.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That might have been more, I probably should have kept.
No, it.
More complicated.
No, it makes sense.
Better now than later.
So I'll just throw this out there, hindsight being twenty twenty. Right, we made the mistake with the law enforcement center by not thinking the process through completely, right? And we have to live with that discuss, that decision because we did it wrong. To Daniel's point of. We never really. I never really thought of the probation period, you know, making that official with. The wages attached to it, right? I mean. There's a probation period when you hire somebody, but. To a specific case in a specific position, probably should have been part of our thought process in the beginning. Because I do concur that.
Only thing. Only thing that I disagree on that, so you're telling me. Since Daniel was an employee with us already. We moved and now he got hired into the state's attorney. We could have let him go in six months? I don't think.
No.
No, because he already went through his probational period. That would just be, so for instance, promoting him into the head guy.
Okay.
You're telling me in six months if we don't feel he's doing a good job, we just say, see you? I don't think that's.
Well, and I, and I think it's a little different on the state's attorney is now he, once he's appointed to that position.
Right, he has it.
Elected official.
Yes, and just so it's clear, North Dakota's an at-will state, you can hire and fire it anytime. There's no. Six-month magical.
Right, right.
Just trying to clarify.
We're all on the same.
I'm not tracking that. I was gonna just get ready because you were forming in six.
No, and that's not what I, that's not what I was implying either, but you know, to Jess's point that.
Right.
Since it is a elected position, it's kinda. It's got, it's all, it's got its own.
I, I think once we've made that appointment, he's there, he's there and tell you that the governor removed some more.
Right.
The electors do.
But I guess the point I was making was, you know, not that he was gonna get fired.
Yeah.
It, it was the money thing, try to tie the money thing into.
That tied to a probationary time, you know, situation. Yep.
Well, I guess. I don't wanna sit here all night and just.
No, right. We gotta make some kind of decision.
I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve the request.
And a motion to approve the request uh to bring. The current state's attorney salary up to where it was. Or budgeted for, let me put it that way. Is there a second?
I will second.
Motion in a second to increase the state's attorney's salary to current budget level. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Nay.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Nay.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gesner.
Motion carried.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Uh Jason. Jason, wake up.
I'm, I'm okay.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Um, we'll operate the business here. I got an invoice in from KLJ Construction for Engineering on the Eightieth Avenue, South Milwaukee Project. So that was for forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. I'm asking for a motion. From you to pay that and I'll submit for reimbursement.
So move, second.
Motion in second to approve the invoice for forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents for the South Milwaukee Project. Which is a grant-funded project. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, next we have um Tri-State Paving, got our asphalt patching overlays done. And before I get into the um amount on that. I do wanna share that we've had three separate phone calls from three different residents who live in the areas. All very happy with the patching work of Tri-State Paving. We've never had them do any patching before. And uh so that's a hats off to them because a couple of those individuals are a little tougher to please, so. Very, very impressed with their work at the, as of this point. So they still have some work to do in Devil's Lake Yard and then the salt shit, of course, but this invoice was for. Thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and that is all four spots in Ramsey County eight. And the spot in Ramsey County three north of Hampden by the elevator. Would like a motion to, to pay Tri-State Paving for thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars.
So move, second.
Motion in a second to approve the invoice for Tri-State Paving. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye. Motion carried.
Um Gleason Construction has completed the uh salt storage facility structure. That's all done. Um, so they submitted their invoice for the bid. That they had bid of fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to be paid. So I'd like a motion to pay Gleason Construction for, for their work.
So move.
Start you.
Motion in a second to pay Gleason Construction fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty. Is that what you said?
Yep, yes.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye. Motion carried.
Um, we received the um class forty-one M. That Morris Seal Coat had left over from a project up north. They ended up with four hundred and forty-eight point one five tons at twenty-three dollars per ton delivered. That comes out to ten thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and forty-five cents. So I'm asking for a motion to pay Morris Seal Coat for their product they delivered.
So move, second.
Motion in a second to pay the invoice to Morris Seal, Seal Coat. Any other discussion? For the amount of ten thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and forty-five cents. Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye. Motion carried.
Next up, um, bridge. Thirty-six dash one oh one dash twenty, a structure number with the state system. Is a finalist in the Grants for Bridges program of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-seven Flex Fund. Um, this as a semifinalist is actually for a removal. This is the south, the bridge straight south of Church's Ferry, the concrete bridge that. Is currently sitting in the water or possibly underwater again after the rain. Um, I just wanted to keep you guys in the, in the loop. What's going on with this? Because at some point, if we're approved for a grant. We're gonna have to decide if that is something we wanna move forward with. The reason, after visiting back and forth with Paul, is there's several reasons to get rid of it. At some point, if that bridge does not pass inspection. It'll become necessarily upon us to remove it. And if we, so if we do receive the funding, we'll have to really take a strong look at removing it. If we do receive the grant funding, the only cost to the county would be the preliminary costs. Um, everything else, the flex fund would cover the construction and the construction engineering costs. So that's just something to keep in mind. I know that's a busy, was a busy traveled road in its day. And as of right now, it's still a good bridge, but for how long sitting in water, constant water? And when they do the underwater um inspection of that bridge, it's a very expensive bridge inspection. Our local share is over three thousand dollars on that.
So I have a question. If we. Get the grant and we use the grant to remove the bridge, does that tie our hands for getting, you know, if the lake. Goes down, which we have no control over, but can we, will that remove it from any federal? Future federal funding or will we be, will we have an option to put that bridge back in?
I would say the bridge, once the bridge is gone, the bridge would be gone, yes. I think that would be the end of the structure. We could, at that point, we still, as, as of now, as far as I'm aware, that road is still under our. O- ownership, it's not a, we have worked on.
We didn't move funding.
What's that?
We didn't move funding to another.
No, we haven't done, we've actually worked on the south end of that road a few times under Kevin, trying to get it ready when it would come out of the water. So if it were to ever come out, we could look at some type of, you know, culvert structure or many different things that poss, you know. We probably wouldn't have to go with the bridge.
Right, so.
I think what you're saying is could we put that road back into service and fix that?
That's what I'm.
Bridge.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that we could put blocks called.
Yep, yep.
But my, my question is still the same, is, is that.
Don't think it gives up our, I don't think it abandons the road, the entire road. I would have to, we'll have to check for sure, but. I didn't see anything that stated that, but. No, I don't think it'd be a federal funding, but we could still go forward on our own, I think, and repair that road at some point if the water.
Right. Okay.
No bridge funding.
So that road still, the rest of the road is still on the federal system. We would have, be eligible for the rest of the road on the federal system or would it take that whole road out?
No, that's county.
County line road, it's the non-functioning and outdated county road, but it's.
Right.
It's a county road, it's a county line road, it's actually shared. It's a shared road with Benson County.
What's that?
If you're gonna talk, Paul, you need to come up through the microphone.
Yep.
Yeah, so, I mean, it would, it would take quite a bit to build up the road to make that bridge passable.
Right, that's not, that's not what I'm asking though, right?
I mean, that, that would be the reason that you'd get rid of it is because the lake is, can come up quite a bit more from where it is now.
Right, but the, but the lake can also go down quite a bit.
Right.
Exactly, and, and this would be a thirty-year down, this could be thirty years down the road. Or what I'm, what I wanna know is even if. The portion of that road, that is the bridge, we can't get funding for that. I'm asking, is the rest of the road then taken off this federal system?
So basically, if it came out of water, you could put box culverts in.
Right, at our expense, I understand that, our, our expense, but what I'm saying is we're not abandoning, we're not gonna be forced to abandon. The rest of that.
That's, I have read nothing that tells us that we give up local road authority of the county line. Right, it's just for the.
That's, um, well, the local authority, I know we have the local authorities, the federal funding.
The federal funding is gone for the bridge, correct?
Okay.
For that site, they're not gonna give us a great raise, they're not gonna give us anything for that.
And that, I mean, I wouldn't be looking to put money into that until the lake was.
Yes, and we.
Five feet lower than it is and it stayed there because it would make no sense.
Yep.
But what I'm saying is I don't wanna lose the potential to fix the rest of that. Even if we have to find the money for the bridge portion.
Exactly, and, and like I say, we're just in the semifinalist stage. Now, does that mean? Four as in semifinalist or in state terms is that forty? I don't know.
Yeah.
So we don't have to make that decision.
Until we.
Bringing this.
Yes, then it's been asked for and received and it's meeting the qualifications. Because also, obviously for the state side of this too, we're paying four thousand dollars local share, they're paying the other eighty percent every time that bridge has to be inspected. Sitting in water.
Right.
So of course they, they have no issue getting it off of their system either, you know.
But I guess, if you couldn't answer that question, I wanted you to work on the answer for that question because it would determine how I would vote for it.
Right. Yep.
Same situation.
Yeah, we'll clarify. I'll definitely clarify. That's, that's a fair.
I wanna make sure that the road won't go away.
Right.
Get rid of the bridge so we can. Never get any funding for that road.
Right, right, and I mean, I would accept. The bridge possible for putting box culverts or whatever in there, but I, I don't wanna lose. And I've been, I've been on township board where you had to make a choice whether that road was gonna be ever used.
Right.
Again, in the next thousand years and not, I don't want the county, the next, if I'm not on this commission. Hopefully in thirty years I ain't on this. But if that's when the lake goes down, I don't want them to be hamstrung by something that we did today.
Well, and if the lake drops two feet over the next couple of years, you could probably hatch up the road and use it again.
Right.
Right, it's still functioning, it's still safe.
Right.
It's still good, there's no, yeah, it's strong, if there's not, there's zero, there's zero restriction on the bridge.
Right.
It's just that if it continues to stay in the pattern it's in, at some point, it's not going to.
I get that.
Yeah, it's currently closed.
Right, yeah.
Well, since we have Paul up here, can we, can we just jump to two things quick and then we'll come back to where I left off? Um, you had something for Candy?
Um, yeah, I just emailed Candy and one more letter that the state wants with the flex grants for townships. Um, that they, just acknowledging that the county is aware that the funding would have to flow through them.
Oh.
It actually can, it can, can come from the auditor, but I didn't know if you guys wanted to make a special motion of authorizing.
And that's the Creole Township or North, the one.
Yeah.
The truck route, right?
Fourteenth Street Terminal Road, yeah. Yeah, and um. There was a, a couple other townships that asked about projects too.
Okay.
Uh, let's see which one.
Odessa.
Oh, Odessa, yeah. They, they have had a grading job for about a mile, mile and a half that they wanted to do. Um, so that would be one for that too, I guess.
For flex funding.
Right. They also wanted to regrade a rope. Um, it goes out to a campground there, but the minimum project cost that they can submit for is two hundred and fifty thousand for the grants, so. That wouldn't qualify anyway, so it would just be the one.
I'd make a motion to blanket cover signing the flex fund requests that come in. Between now and the deadline.
Which is Friday.
The second.
So, any others come in between now and Friday, I think uh the chairman of the auditor can go ahead and sign.
Just, just the auditor.
Just the auditors needed for that.
Okay, and you seconded it, Bill?
He sure did.
Okay. Oh, was it you?
No, I heard he sure did. Helping you out.
I'm sorry.
Motion in a second to uh authorize the auditor to sign letters of support or understanding, I guess, a better way to put it. That the county will have to administrate the funds for any flex programs that are, or flex projects that are approved. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
So. Thank, thank you for that. Um, we're gonna jump. So, thank, thank you for that. Um, we're gonna jump now to, uh. I forgot one word in here and I was pre-freeting before the meeting. The first motion I'd like to ask, um, for is to move forward on grant writing for the west part of the truck route. I, I, I've left out the word west, but that's important to know because. We did, we have a few repairs to make out there and then seeing if there's any funds available for paving that. Um, there's only about, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but about forty million dollars available. Statewide and we're looking at trying to sell two million dollars of that up into our truck route. So the realistic, it, it, it's probably not realistically there, but it's where we gotta, if we keep pushing, maybe eventually.
You don't try it never.
Right, and the more they see it and the more we. And that, so I would like to ask for motion to have him just keep working on that. He has been working on that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve, uh, moving forward with the west truck route improvements. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
And then if he has the time, since these deadlines are all coming fast and furious. I've visited with him. We talked about it briefly at the last meeting. I'd also like him to try to continue working on getting something proposed for that east truck route realignment. To get the trucks out of the city of Devil's Lake. Um, again, this has never been proposed at the state level, I don't believe. So it would be a first time proposal. Again, it's probably not gonna catch much traction at the first time. But if you don't start, you know, you may never get it, so we gotta start somewhere. So that's kind of what we're looking at there. Um, we can have more discussion on that if you guys would like, before we actually go forward with that. I don't know, Paul, if you even have time to get that together.
Um, so we roughed it out, it'd probably be, you know, a seven to nine million dollar project. The, what would they ask for on this phase of it though, would just be redoing the preliminary study to see which options would be the best, um, you know, whether we go. Straight up outside, we continue on as far as it goes and then go across to fifty first street or whether, there's a couple of their lines we'd like to add. Um, as options, I guess our ask would be for to submit the planning study, which would be, you know, probably less than two hundred fifty thousand dollars minimum. Um, project, but since the total project, they did say we could phase them, so I think that would make it eligible.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion, but with stipulations and, um, we'll have a second to the motion and then I'll have my questions, I guess.
For the stipulation.
Yeah.
No, I just have questions regarding the funding for it, the, this, the initial study. And, but I think it'd be appropriate parliamentary to have a motion and a second.
Oh, and then have the discussion.
And then have a discussion.
Gotcha, so we have a motion as their second. Okay, motion and second, floor is yours, Jeff.
Okay, so if, if this is approved to move forward with this preliminary s- study and, and planning for this. Where does that funding come from?
Flex fund.
Flex fund, so it's not a.
Or the periodic competitive grants, which the, these same applications will roll into, and they're also hundred percent state funds.
Be, because I do believe that your budget's already been submitted and I don't recall this being in there.
No.
Yeah, both of these are hundred percent state funds.
Yeah, that we, we're okay. We're not looking for anything for local share for next year.
So, yes, studying this alternative, I think is a good idea, but. Um, as long as it doesn't cost us anything, even better.
Right.
And, um, I don't know how the cost with you or for this, I don't know where we would sit on that, but we do have. Um, money available for some quick prelim stuff for getting this together.
Yeah, this, this will just, uh, we're just gonna throw in, in the quick planning level, we'll estimate for that. It's not gonna be. We're not charging for generating stuff, um, just because it likely generates more work for us, so I mean, it's marketing essentially, so we're not charging. For it and if you, if you are awarded the funds for that. Um, planning study for the truck route, you don't necessarily have to use those. You can put on an R and B for that if you feel want, find to do that.
And also just to touch on that too, as I think most of you are aware, but. If we were awarded a grant for any of these projects we just mentioned, we're at least probably twenty seven or twenty eight, so we would have time to find. Local funding if there is some necessary for preliminary engineering. Once you get into the construction engineering or construction, then if one is hundred percent funded, they're funded, the only cost could be. On the preliminary side of it, but that would be, they're not gonna come back and say, yes, we can start next year.
So I, I think we have a, a motion on the, on the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. So your question got answered, Jeff.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to, uh, submit the grant for proposal of the east side truck route. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
I think that's all I had for you. Unless you have something else?
Um, the four yard sites are back open traffic, the two pavements aren't paved yet, so they've got till, um. October eighteenth, I believe. If you get that, um, it sounds like it's gonna be close to that, uh, it's the first week in October. Is when they're likely to get back and out before it rains here a few times, so.
Gotcha.
I would guess that that'll be the first or second week in October. And then eighty ninth avenue, um, they got the gravel on top, so it's on the road, they're gonna stop the bar a bit when they go through the day. Dressing up the rooftop a little bit, but, uh, that's looking pretty good, so.
I'd like to thank both of you guys for. Putting the stuff on the radio and stuff for the Crary Road because I got a lot of questions asked on that right away. That you guys got onto it right away when I got the call and called you, Jason.
Yeah.
Got to hold you. Thank you for that. Because they didn't have.
I, I.
Well, they didn't have the roads.
On Facebook.
They didn't have the road closed at the highway, so people were driving up to the site.
Oh.
And then having to turn around and go all the way back around, so I appreciate it. Getting put on the radio and.
No problem.
It cleared it up, so the, the phone calls stopped. And they got that one done pretty quick, which was nice because there's a lot of traffic under that elevator, plus all the townspeople want to take the asphalt, so. They knocked that out pretty quick.
Yeah, they do have a couple of punchless things. There was a soft spot around the county line that they fixed. I don't know if it healed up after the rain. There's some, some of the dirt between the culverts that'll, um, help me tan a couple of other sites. Um, so we're gonna make it come back and fix that stuff, but they're passable anyway.
And even though it is a federal highway project where funds for the projects, he very good about keeping me in all those emails, so. If you have any questions, I could probably answer them. I do have those stuff, and if not, we can always reach Paul, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, um. The last thing, we're gonna come back, we're gonna come back to that, um, culvert thing. That's, that's a little bit of a conversation more than anything. Um, we were able to get a second tractor for mowing on lease from High Plains Equipment. I did call Mr. Volk. It didn't look like we were gonna get one. I did call him and, and just, but wanted someone to know that we were getting one and it was gonna cost forty five hundred dollars for a hundred dollar lease. So I would like to.
And I made sure that he had the money and the budget before.
Yeah, we had budgeted for it, but we were only able to get one in the program, the rental program, so. Um, I wanted to make sure that you guys know that and. I guess I'm not asking for anything as of now. When we get the invoice for that and return the tractor, I'll be asking for money, but that is just more of a. So you guys are, are aware. I would like to, um. I would like to ask for out of town travel for myself to Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Motion and second, state travel.
I would like to, uh, also the Bismarck.
Well, that's.
In state. Yes. Oh, oh, yeah, we got a. You gotta vote, that's it.
Any other discussion on the other state travel? All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Okay.
All right, then we'll do the in-state one. I'll be attending that annual conference.
I don't think you need approval for that.
Okay. Sounds good.
I would encourage department heads to go and create informational, um, opportunity.
Perfect. Uh, one of the last things I have to talk about is the surplus auction update. Um, I reached out to Mr. Jacobson. He no longer does the auctions. We reached out and, uh, Westhead Auction and Appraisal. Um, Kyler Westhead came over, walked the lot and he did present a contract for the, would be for the chairman to sign. Um, the contract states that the sale would be conducted at their Westhead Auction Lot, west or east of Devil's Lake. The things that can be moved, he'd like to move them out there. He thinks there'd be higher visibility along the highway. Um, he would charge five percent or they would, five percent. And the other, other, only other cost to the county would be the advertising costs and those things would be invoiced at the end. Estimated that to be fifteen hundred dollars with posters, peddler, online and daily journal. He said that could be lower. But he had no idea for the amount of items we have. So my, um, quick math, I did it. I figured if it was a fifty thousand dollar sale, can do the math on that, twenty five hundred dollar. Commission to, you know, I, I would just use the numbers, throwing them around to see what costs we're looking at.
I make the motion to go with the auctioneer that with his five percent. And those, uh.
Advertising.
Advertising.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I only have one question. As far as moving the stuff out there, you're gonna have.
Stuff that runs.
But I mean, you, you.
Yeah.
With all the other stuff you're, you'll have time to.
Yeah, but you know, like, we got time till the, the, oh yeah, that's the thing. Um, it's the tenth of October is when he would do it. So if sheriff wants to get anything still listed before we actually make the bill of sale, you know, the listing. I mean, he wants to do it before snow flies, obviously wants to move it out there, so.
Okay.
I would go before October tenth then.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
And then the last thing I wanted to talk about quickly, and I know tonight got long, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time. We don't need to make the motion now, but. Another food for thought, I'm gonna get with Daniel. Actually, when I think more about this after I put it together. We need to get something in place for, um, when we preorder culverts for people, special order culverts. I brought two examples if anybody would like to look at them. I got one in here for nine months. There was a ten thousand dollar culvert. That it was charged to the township and then it got switched to the private guy and then when the guy came to pay it. We charged him sales tax because it was no longer a township sale and then he was upset with that and, but. We're not in the business at the highway department to get around sales tax evasion.
Right.
So if it's going to a private party, it has to be sales taxed. Um, that, we need to get a policy in place on. The other one we carried for one year, five months and thirteen days. And that was a thirty six hundred dollar bill.
That's too long.
And I just, I cleaned these up when I took over for Kevin. And as we found out, it wasn't probably the most popular thing I've done. It turned some sour grapes on me a little bit, I think. I, I didn't mean for that to happen. I just wanted to get it off the record because Kevin's gone. Now I wanted to start with a clean slate.
Yep.
And as I made phone calls every two weeks until I got these two cleared up, so.
I don't know that we need to think about that. I think we should just give you permission to work with Daniel if that's required.
Yeah.
I think, I don't even think that requires a resolution or a motion of the commission. That's, that's something that I can sit down with Jason on it.
Cause I, that's, that's just better business.
Yeah, and any of the, um, in the past, like, we probably see someone charge a culvert to the township. And then they'll pay half of it and the township will pay half. Well, the half, that half still has to be taxed because. The township is using their tax exemption to, in that place. If the township wants to sell it to them. Any of those situations, we'll spell that out too. We'll just make that whole township paid and then we should be good.
Okay.
So do you guys have anything for me?
Um, any else for Ken or Gavin?
We have, uh, I had that one slight change to the budget. I did lower it a little bit. I'll get you guys the new numbers when you need them or as soon as you want them, because that tar kettle we took out of the next year for equipment. So the money present this year. And then I did receive another sixty two thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars candy. Something like that. Um, from, from the twenty two disaster.
Oh.
Uh, we went back and we, we got notified that there was gonna be some funds for the emergency work that the county had done. So we went back and pulled all the information we had and we submitted that and, um, they gave us the full hundred percent. They didn't deduct me at all for being late to the dance, so we got that for twenty twenty two, so that'll be coming for us as well.
Thanks. Is that it for Jason?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Well, let me find my agenda here as we, uh, unfinished business, appointment to the city planning commission. I have not been.
You need to find somebody.
Need to find somebody, okay? There's our homework. Any other unfinished business?
We need to find somebody from the commission or the commission needs to find somebody to appoint.
Find somebody to appoint.
Ray Slumberland is still going to meetings until.
This is for the city, cities planning?
Yes.
Commission.
It is a county representative on the city planning commission.
Just like the city has representatives on our.
Yes.
We have one on theirs.
Brian? Are you here to volunteer? No, okay. Uh, new business, bankruptcy litigation. We need to make a decision on that tonight.
Yes. Yes, I just need a vote of the commission approving the bankruptcy plan. This is separate. Uh, but related to the opioid. Uh, settlement agreement that I asked the commission to enter into last month. Uh, this is the dissolution of Purdue according to that same set of negotiations. Yes.
It hit two hundred and eighty-three pages. I did not read them all, um, but.
It's fun reading.
Yeah. Uh, do you recommend us, uh, proving this?
I do. I recommend that the commission approve the, um. The bankruptcy plan, uh, and then once that is done, I'll send that notice on to the representatives who are conveying all that information. And that will be the end of the county's involvement, other than receiving checks down the line.
So, when all this came about, I was chairman and I continued to get those emails. Are you aware of all that? And you're getting those as well, Candy, I think?
I'm getting a good handful of them as well.
Okay.
I've asked them to update those addresses.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an act of God to try to, uh.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I'm still getting flooded.
Yeah.
Uh, the motion to approve the bankruptcy litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? That was.
Whatever, don't care.
One of these over here.
Well.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Uh, last thing on the amended was a letter from Mr. Wood. Home. Oh, yeah, sorry, skip that. Motion to approve the homestead credit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Now we're to the amended portion. Um, I'm not sure what he's asking for.
He's just asking for a letter of support. Uh, he's gonna apply for a grant, I believe.
Yep.
Similar to all the other flex funding grants.
Okay.
Transportation grants that are out there and he wants to improve my, improve this road, just a letter of support.
So I'll make motion to give him a letter of support, a support is.
Are you making a motion to, you're gonna write it or?
Oh, I'm not gonna write. I don't know.
You want me to write it?
Sure. Better than me writing it, I can tell you that. Well, let's take one thing at a time. We've got a motion to, to approve a letter of support. We got a second, Mr. Brett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Who's supposed to write it?
We will.
We will?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna leave you. I'll, I'll leave you in charge of that, Mr. Otis. Uh, visitors and delegations. Okay. Anything from the commission about any of their portfolios, any announcements or anything?
I have nothing. We don't have a, a person for appointing to the social service board at the next meeting.
Okay.
Delete tomorrow.
Anything else?
Law enforcement center meets in the morning. And will be. A great meeting.
Anything else from anybody? Seeing that in motion or, uh, during the meeting.